Good evening. Called to order this April 6th, meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council, and ask the city secretary to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Light?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Bessie?
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery?
Here.
Councilmember Burke?
Here.
Councilmember Adams?
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Here.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you. And would you please join the city council and me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our Sergeant at Arms, and I just Lieutenant Tom Boils. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us. Recently promoted, as I understand it, and first time being Sergeant at Arms. We appreciate your being here. First item, please.
City Stars Presentation.
Call on Chantel Davis, who heads up this program with the city employees, for a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is a pleasure to once again stand before you to recognize and celebrate those city employees that go above and beyond to provide excellent customer service. And tonight, I bring you the Fourth Quarter City Stars of Excellence winner in the consistent category. Unfortunately, we did not have a winner in the wow category this time. Our consistent winner is Tamara Lewis from Financial Management Services Payroll Division. I would like to tell you a little bit about what Tamara did to win the award, and then give her an opportunity to speak if she would choose to do so, and then allow her to come around so that you all can congratulate her. Tamara was nominated by Michael Riazzi, who at the time was going through the retirement process. He stated that the administrative process, as well as the personal transition into retirement, was both exciting but very stressful with all the forms that needed to be completed, and wanted to make sure that everything got completed correctly and on time. He commended Tamara for alleviating much of that stress for him. He stated that even though he contacted her over and over and over again, that each time she was extremely patient with him, kind, and thorough in her response. Both her human resources supervisor and her previous human resources supervisor and her current payroll supervisor agrees that Tamara consistently goes above and beyond with her customers to provide excellent customer service. And as a former supervisor of Tamara myself, I can concur that that is in fact true. Tamara was nominated, she has been nominated three times now for City Stars, and this is her first win. We want to thank you, Tamara, for consistently providing your customers with excellent customer service. Would you like to say anything?
Just thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to take a minute to thank the mayor and the council for allowing us the time always to present these awards, and for your continuous support of service excellence. Thank you.
Yes. I thank you again for the work that you do. For those of you that haven't retired, I tell people that retirement paperwork is like the paperwork you sign when you're getting a house. So it's more than a notion. It can be overwhelming because you're already facing that uncertainty of moving on to the next chapter of your life. But I thank our HR Department and Payroll Department for always being there for our employees who are getting ready to make that next step.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. I was gonna say to Ms. Davis and the other lady that sometimes when people are not accepted the first go around, we become discouraged. And it's something on a marquee that I pass every day on Carver School Road at this church, and it says, "A denial," it's just a delay. And I want our other employees to remember that. It's just being delayed some, and it's for you, it will be.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Tonight's agenda of the city council is comprised of the following items. We have seven rezoning petitions, an annexation petition, which is an item adopting the proposed North Central Winston-Salem Area Plan Update, and an item approving requests for certificates of public convenience and necessity, as well as an item adopting the proposed City-County Public Art Plan. The rezoning petitions, the annexation petition, the area plan item, and the items approving certificates of public convenience and necessity are listed for public hearings. When these public hearings are called, I'll see if anyone in the council chamber wishes to speak, and certainly give them an opportunity to speak. If there is opposition to the rezoning petitions, the proponents and opponents will be each given 15 minutes for presentation and three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, the public hearings will be closed, and the city council will consider the item. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00, and again Wednesday at 9:00 PM. Copies of our agenda and our videos of our meetings are always available online to the public at the city's website, www.cityofws.org, and just select the "Watch Meetings Online" option. May we have the first item, please?
Item one, public hearing on zoning petition of Brookberry Farm LLC from RS9 and MUS to MUS and site plan amendment. Property located at the southern terminus of Summerhill Lane, west of Metalark Drive, located in the West Ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition and approval of the site plan with staff recommendations.
Is there anyone in council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? I know the petitioners are here for any questions. Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Recognize, Councilmember Clark.
Paul, if you'll give two seconds. And also, just want to mention for the council, there are actually two items tonight in this area, Items One and Item Six, so they're kind of first cousins of each other. So if we'll start with number one here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. What you see here in yellow is the proposed rezoning. It's actually a rezoning of the part that's on the right side of that red line. That is the property that is currently zoned RS9, and it's a site plan amendment for the part that is on the left side of the red line. So I'll show you what that overall site plan looks like in just a second. This is the area basically west of Metalark Drive is the developed part of Brookberry, as well as the undeveloped part. There are also other subdivisions on both sides of Metalark as you go up and down there. And this is the case as it is superimposed on the adopted West Suburban Area Plan, as you can see, that calls for low-density residential, which this certainly is a part of. Here's some pictures. Brookberry Farm Circle, the property is to the left where we're talking about there, and further into that area as you see it. This is the site plan. The part on the top part, that little sliver there, is the site plan amendment for the existing MUS zoning. The lower part, inside that dashed rectangle area, is the 14 acres. It's currently RS9. It's being converted to MUS, and that's the site plan for that. This request, when you look at all of those homes that would be allowed, is actually for less zones, less homes, and less traffic than what could be developed under the existing zoning. So in essence, this is a downzoning. The request is consistent with the recommendations of both legacy and the West Suburban Plan, and even with the loss of some open space on this former site plan for this part of the property. There's still an abundant amount of open space within the overall Brookberry Farm development. There was no opposition when this went March 12th to the City-County Planning Board for public hearing, and the planning board recommended approval of this to you.
Any questions for Mr. Norby? Thank you. Mr. Clark?
I will move for, one, adoption of the statement of consistency as set forth on page 27 of the Agenda Book, and, two, approval of the site plan and site plan amendments, and, three, approval of W-3246.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item two?
Item two, public hearing on zoning petition of H. Mack Charter School Consulting LLC from LO to PBL. Property located on the west side of North Lower Wall Boulevard, south of Fifth Street, located in the East Ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Again, is there anyone in council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, and recognize Councilmember Montgomery.
Mr. Norby?
Brief presentation, Mr. Norby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You can see the property here is yellow. It's an individual property that currently has a single-family house on it on the west side of Lower Wall Boulevard, just south of Fifth Street. You see, it's a very developed urban neighborhood with larger-scale uses to the north, on the north side of Fifth Street, smaller scale, and a lot of residential to the south. This is the property in question, a single-family house there along that west side of the street, and this is the house just south of it there. And then this is looking toward the north, toward Fifth Street. You see a vacant lot there between the house and Fifth Street. And then this is Winston Mutual Building on the north side of Fifth Street, and a bank building on the east side of Lower Wall Boulevard. The area plan, adopted area plan, which we're actually going through the update process right now for East Northeast, is calling for a low-intensity commercial and office for this area, and so this request conforms with that plan. The petitioner did remove from their request any auto-related and other types of PB uses from their original request. This, as I said, is consistent with the recommendations of the area plan for office and low-intensity commercial. It's in a pedestrian-oriented activity center, and it may facilitate the reuse of this site. This went March 12th to the Planning Board for public hearing. There was no opposition, and the planning board recommended approval of this.
Questions for Mr. Norby. Thank you. Mr. Montgomery?
I move for adoption of the statement of consistency as set forth on page 53 of the Agenda Book, and, two, approval of W-3252.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you. Councilmember Montgomery?
Item three, public hearing on zoning petition of Art Taylor for property owned by Janice Spainhour and Joyce Bentubo from RS9 to LOL. Property located on the northwest side of Reesville Road, US 158, across from Grover Street, located in the northeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, and recognize Councilmember Burke.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, before I make this motion, I do appreciate the petitioner for being very, very alert in how you carry our business. I appreciate that very much. I move for the adoption of the statement of consistency as set forth on page 85 of the Agenda Book, and, two, approval of W-3253.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. Not all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Burke. Item four?
Item four, public hearing on zoning petition of Anchor Associates LLC and the Allen Anthony Trust from GBS to GBS. Property located on the southwest corner of Haynes Mall Boulevard and Stratford Road, located in the southwest ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition and approval of the site plan with staff recommendations.
Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Recognize, Councilmember Bessie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you can see from the map on the screen, basically, this is at the corner of Haynes Mall Boulevard and South Stratford Road. It's a highly-developed area. This is simply a proposal to change the approved zoning there from a car wash to multiple options of retail as laid out in the detailed specifications. It would not be restricted to, but I understand that the likely use from this owner is that, and basically a mattress spread. So, non-controversial. And I would move for, one, adoption of the statement of consistency as set forth on page 123 of the Agenda Book, two, approval of the site plan, and three, approval of W-3254.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Councilmember Montgomery?
Some comment. It's just interesting. It's a mattress war going on right there, but...
Good sleeping coming up. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Bessie. Sweet dreams.
Item five, public hearing on zoning petition of Habitat for Humanity of Forsyth County Incorporated from LBS and RM18 to RM18. Property located on the southwest corner of Cherry Street and 14th Street, located in the North Ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone opposed to this rezoning? I know the petitioner is here for any questions. Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, and recognize Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Norby, could we have a short review, please?
All right. He's getting good at this.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you can see the site shown in yellow. It's zoned both LBS and RM18, so the entire tract under this proposal would go to RM18, and it is on the south side of 14th Street, east of University Parkway there. And you see the development pattern. Habitat, in fact, has been heavily involved in that area with all the homes that have been renovated or built in that area, as well as their new facilities that are being built just north of there. This is the subject property, looking from 14th Street, and this is looking toward University Parkway. The subject property is to the left, and the adopted area plan is calling for low-density residential. However, we've got to keep in mind the current zoning is a mixture of both commercial and apartments, and so this would be getting rid of the commercial and moving to all apartments in that area. The site is surrounded on three sides with other RM18 zoning. This would consolidate two zoning designations on one site, make it a little simpler to develop, and the request will obviously facilitate the redevelopment of the property. And there was no opposition on March 12th when it went to the Planning Board for public hearing. The Planning Board did recommend approval.
Questions for Mr. Norby. Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Yes. I move for, one, adoption of the statement of consistency as set forth on page 147 of the Agenda Book, and, two, approval of W-3255.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. Not all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Item six?
Item six, public hearing on zoning petition of the city of Winston-Salem for property owned by others from county RS9 and MUS to city RS9 and MUS. Property located on the north and south sides of Heron Ridge Road, west of Metalark Drive. The closest ward is the West Ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition and approval of the site plan with staff recommendations.
Is there anyone in council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Again, the petitioner is here for any questions. It's basically changing from county zoning to city zoning. Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, and recognize Councilmember Clark.
Mr. Norby, if you could give us a few comments.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is basically taking what is in the county jurisdiction, since it has been annexed, and converting it to the identical zoning for the city jurisdiction. As you may recall, portions of this area were rezoned, I believe, a couple years ago to allow for a mixture of attached housing, kind of town center, village center, kind of a concept near Metalark Road, and single-family housing. This is to the north of the site that you dealt with a few minutes ago. So this is simply converting the zoning to a city category. Here's some construction that's going on in place right now. This is the main drive coming into the development from there. This went on March 12th to the Planning Board for public hearing. There was no opposition. The Planning Board recommended approval.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Norby?
Not a question, just a comment. I just want to say thank you for turning some new dirt over here and building some new houses. It's a nice shot in the arm. Thanks.
Councilmember Taylor?
Mr. Norby, do we know if these roads are public or private roads?
I believe they would all be public. That's the developer's intent.
Thank you.
Councilmember Clark?
Yeah, I have a related question. When we annex property and voluntary annexation, do we automatically put it in a ward, or do we have to vote on that at some future date? Because the reading actually said the nearest ward was the West Ward, but I assume this would be in the West Ward. Do we actually have to stick it in there?
I think it automatically becomes part of the West Ward, but I'll take a look at it and make sure.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I move for adoption of the statement of consistency as set forth on page 169 of the Agenda Book, two, approval of the site plan, and three, approval of W-3257.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Item seven, public hearing on zoning petition of the city of Winston-Salem for property owned by Castania LLC from Davidson County HC to City LB. Property located on the southwest corner of Old Salisbury Road and Friedburg Church Road. The closest ward is the South Ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition and approval of the site plan with staff recommendations. The petitioner has requested to withdraw this petition.
I recognize, Councilmember Light?
Thank you. I'll move for approval of the request to withdraw W-3257.
Second, then motion.
Motion, second. Discussion. Councilmember Montgomery?
I notice it says, "Withdrawd due to annexation petition becoming invalid." Could that be explained?
Boy, that's on number seven, but they're related. Basically, for this voluntary annexation petition to go forward, the petitioner had to have Davidson County adopt a resolution of consent, and that resolution was declined or not adopted by the Davidson County Board of County Commissioners. So, because that wasn't adopted, basically, city council has no option but to deny the request, or to deny the petition and to grant the request for the withdrawal. Is that what you needed?
All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. And then number eight is related to that.
Item eight, continuation of consideration of items relating to a petition for annexation of 2.2 acres located southwest of the intersection of Friedburg Church Road and Old Salisbury Road, being part of a development known as Castaria LLC in the South Ward. Davidson County Commissioners denied the voluntary annexation request for this item at its March 24, 2015 meeting.
Again, as the city attorney explained, the city council really does not have any options on this, but to, I guess, official motion to allow the withdrawal of the annexation petition?
Or move to deny it. He actually did not make a request to withdraw the annexation petition, which is why I turned the motion to deny it. You can't move forward with it.
Okay, thank you. I move to deny the voluntary annexation petition based upon the decision of the Davidson County Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Councilmember Montgomery?
If, in fact, at some time, the Davidson County Board of Commissioners changed their decision based upon a denial, that means that even if that decision was changed, that it would be under the same restrictions of any other denial that comes through in rezoning?
Well, the rezoning request was actually withdrawn. It's two actions. The first one was the rezoning request, and there was a request to withdraw that, so that's been withdrawn. The second one was the voluntary annexation petition. That was denied. Now, if for some reason he asked the Davidson County Commissioners to give consent to a future annexation, and they agreed to that, certainly he can submit a petition for annexation in the future, and you all can review that, as well as a rezoning request at that point in the future.
There's no time restriction on that one?
Right.
Okay. Councilmember Taylor?
Yeah, I just want to state, Mayor, I know sometimes when we read the news, and look at the news and read the media outlets, there's information out there that municipalities aren't quite working together for the greater good. I think this is an example of county and the city kind of working together for what we believe to be the greater good of the entire area. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. All right. All in favor of the motion to deny this annexation petition, please say aye. Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item nine?
Item nine, public hearing and resolution adopting the proposed North Central Winston-Salem Area Plan Update, recommended by Community Development, Housing, General Government Committee, and the Planning Board.
Before we do the public hearing, I want Mr. Norby and Mr. Bennett to give us a brief presentation on the updated plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, of course, another one of our series of area plans that cover basically the entire city and county, with the exception of the rural area. This one is the North Central Area Plan, which was done a number of years ago, and we're coming back and updating that. And just to remind everybody, the boundaries basically go from the downtown area on up to almost the Wake Forest area, Reynolds Boulevard, to the, on the north side, US 52 on the east side, and then sort of to the, through the children's home property and back up to University Parkway there in the northwest part. This includes portions of four wards, the North Ward, Northeast Ward, East Ward, and Northwest Ward. And this involved a pretty interactive citizen participation process. So I'd like for Kelly Bennett, who was in charge of putting this plan together, to go through the planning process with you very briefly, and show you the recommendations. Bennett?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
So, we've held four public meetings between September and December for this plan, and the Planning Board public hearing in February. Around 60 citizens and stakeholders attended these meetings. The area is characterized by mainly single-family residential and a great deal of industrial uses. Most of the proposed changes align with the 2007 plan. And the plan identifies three activity centers, North Side, Patterson Glen, and University Deacon. University Deacon is new activity center for this area plan, and it's right next to Wake Forest University's athletic facilities, has a great deal of potential to be a place where students and others could live in a mixed-use environment, and the recommendations reflect that. Here's an aerial view of the east side of the activity center around Beatty Street and Deacon Boulevard. And this is a site plan, one of several possible site plans for this area, that's recommended for mixed-use. This is a recent view of Beatty Street, and a rendering of what potential mixed-use development could look like here. A major topic of conversation at the meeting was the area's RUCAs. The Patterson Glen Activity Center is an identified RUCA with a number of underused buildings. And this is an aerial view of the area. Of course, RUCA funds would require private investment and council approval. And we worked on a site plan for this area of potential development. This one uses Greenway Avenue as a commercial spine. That's also pedestrian-friendly. And this is a rendering of this area, more developed. The Patterson Northwest RUCA is another area of concern. And the Community and Business Development Department is actually partnering with the Union CDC to explore redevelopment of this site. It was a former grocery store, and they're exploring whether this building could be reused or redeveloped as another grocery store for the area. And this is a site plan of what that could look like, also using the gas station site there, and a street-level view, and a rendering of what that potential development could look like. Two transportation projects in the area are the MLK Extension and the Reynolda Road Connector. The MLK Extension is planned to be completed before 2025, and the Reynolda Road Connector would only be built if the children's home property is developed. One recommendation in the community facilities section is to replace the MLK Community Center in Kimberly Park. This building's really well-used and popular, but it's physically outdated. And the Planning Board added the following language at their public hearing, "In light of some of the contaminated site issues that have come to light with the Haynes-Lorance School." And I'll be happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Bennett? Councilmember Bessie?
I just belatedly noticed that there had been one vote against on the Planning Board, but there was no discussion of why Ms. Donegan...
Ms. Donegan wanted to add... Ms. Donegan wanted to add stronger language on the contaminated sites, and the Planning Board wanted to use this language in that it's, since we weren't evaluating all contaminated sites in the city, thought it would be a potential problem to point out one hazardous site when we haven't evaluated all of the sites. Thank you.
Right. Councilmember Burke.
Mayor, and talking about the area, Mr. Vince, Benton.
Ben, Bennett.
When you look at the Glen, right on Patterson Avenue, right across the street, they have that milk, I mean, that used to be a dairy, but it's an orange juice place. And I talked with Mr. Turner last week, or the other week, about saturated with so many trucks coming in and out of there. And then you're talking about making an improvement further up where you have the, it could be further down, where you have Northwest Boulevard.
Yes.
The grocery store possibility, that Union CDC, but you have that service station there.
The area, the Patterson Glen area across from the former dairy, we actually looked at using Greenway Avenue as the commercial spine, and using this area here. You can see, this is actually the dairy that you're referring to, and we put in the site plan parking over here, just because this isn't as, you know, friendly an area to walk in with the traffic and the truck traffic as well, and kind of pushed the commercial corridor into this area so that parking could come in off of Glen or Patterson and then make for an area with four buildings there.
You have some very nice homes still on Glen Avenue, and those trucks coming in and out, I don't know what it's doing to the value of their property, and also talking about people coming and going with all those trucks. And then on the other side of Patterson Avenue, you have very nice housing over on that Greenway, Montrose. Those houses are just simply beautiful homes, and even if you go down Patterson Avenue, you see those nice, large houses, somebody's in there working on them. I don't know if we're doing quite enough, Mr. City Manager, to protect those neighborhoods. And I don't know when we propose to be doing something like this, because while we're doing this, investors are going in, and some of them are not really genuinely concerned about the neighborhood, and we're now taking some of our stronger neighborhoods who are not as desirable, and some of those homeowners have been there so long, and they're not going anywhere. And I think we're having transportation back and forth to Wake Forest, and all you're talking about doing there, that little pocket there will become more like a slum area. Go ahead. Anybody gonna speak?
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Burke, I did talk to Mr. Turner, and we're gonna look into different possibilities to try to alleviate some of the truck traffic, and we'll also look at what other improvements we could do for the residential areas.
And I did ask Mr. Turner to make sure they sort of look at where those trucks are coming from. It just looks like it's a place, and I believe Mr. Clark brought it to the attention, back when we were looking at that building on Patterson Avenue, have you seen all those trucks? And it's more and more trucks coming in there. And I want to know where they're coming from. Is that a storage place, or just what it is becoming?
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Adams, any questions?
Yes, to comment on what Councilmember Burke's saying. I often cut through these neighborhoods because Okalina, O-K-L-I-N-A, is where my parents bought their first home, and I still have a lot of neighborhood people that I know and live there. And as Ms. Burke was saying, these neighborhoods are truly older neighborhoods. You have some homes that the homeowners have worked diligently over the past 40, 50 years to keep them up. And then you have other homes that are blight. My concern is like hers, when I was driving through last week, I was coming down Liberty, made the turn on Ivy, came up Ivy, and then I saw three or four tractor-trailer trucks turn into the two businesses that are there. It's really three now, two or three. And it didn't seem, it just seemed kind of not right. It really did, how they were maneuvering to get into those businesses with the other traffic that was on the street, on Ivy, and I think it's 17th or 16th, between there and the park. I think we might need to look at that. Again, the commercial center we're talking about possibly looking at, this commercial center has been in need of help for many, many years, probably since the late 70s, maybe 80. And I think we need to find a way, Mr. Garrity and the mayor and the council, as to how do we invigorate that commercial center that could bring some life to this side of town. If you look at this, if you would just go there and look at this, and look at what is going on in that area, it would just make you very sad. That's what I keep telling people. We have our neighborhoods that are suffering, and I mean, I'm not talking about, on a scale of one to 10, they're zero. And I think if we could just get something going in these great old buildings there, and those owners of those buildings there, that community needs a small grocery store, a drugstore, just basic needs. It would bring life to that commercial center right there. And so I'm helping Ms. Burke. And we need to get this one, we need to work on this one next, we really do, we really do.
Thank you. Councilmember McIntyre?
I just want to quickly talk about this as an opportunity to plug, ask people to contact their state senators about the historic tax credit. That's a tool that we used to have in our toolbox that have been used in other neighborhoods to bring them back. It's no longer an option for us, but this is an area that cries out for using historic tax credits. So it's not just places like Innovation Quarter that get to use them, but it's neighborhoods and neighborhoods that can use any tool they can, and it's been taken off the table. Please contact your state senator and ask them to bring that back.
Thank you. All right, thank you. This is in four wards, as was mentioned, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, North Ward has the biggest part over there, and since Councilmember Adams starts with a there, I recognize you for a motion if you're...
We didn't get any paperwork. I mean, what...
Oh, I'm sorry, before we do that, we do have a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed area plan? All right, seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed and...
Come back soon.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am. I didn't see you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Great. I'm Tawana Wellman-Robuck, I'm the Director of ESR. The purpose of my question today is regarding the Bojangles that's there on Patterson Avenue. They're sort of an empty place, and we know that there is a sweepstakes very nearby, as well as a new blood center that is open at the North Side Shopping Center. Miss Minnie Irving's Beauty Salon is there on Patterson Avenue, and we have representation on our Board of Directors from the Patterson Avenue neighborhood. So they have brought up in our board meeting a number of times their concern around absentee landlords potentially buying the space, potentially for an investment. And so the concern seems to be to make sure that perhaps we don't get another sweepstake location in our community. And there in that Patterson Avenue area, and as I looked at your design plans, I didn't necessarily see that you were coming further up Patterson for potential growth opportunities that is on the corner of Indiana and Patterson. ESR is located on the other end of Indiana, and so we want to certainly be good stewards and members of the community, and so we want to share the concerns that have been given to us regarding the potential growth for that Bojangles that is now closed.
Thank you, Ms. Robuck. Paul, excuse me, would you want to comment on the tie between the land use plan here and the others?
Well, of course, the land use plan is simply saying here is the desired land use. It doesn't actually change zoning there. And of course, as the council knows, you've adopted fairly restrictive rules concerning future sweepstakes operations. They can only be, I believe, in one zoning district, and there's also some court action pending, which may even put the existing ones in jeopardy. So hopefully, that land use, that particular land use might be something of the past in the future, if the court decision goes a certain way. This plan also has a number of visionary ideas in it, which this area is important, and it's an area that's worthy of investment and continued investment. And so the intent of the plan was to show examples in these activity areas where those areas, what would it look like if they could be revitalized? And then it identifies existing programs like RUCA that can help bring private and public investment to the area. So the plan, adopting the plan, doesn't make it happen, but it sets the template and it sets the vision so that as the council identifies resources and as the private sector can be brought in and enticed to come in, that you can realize that vision as shown in the plan.
May I ask the city attorney also just to comment on the status of the sweepstakes issues in general?
Sure, I'd be happy to. The petition for discretionary review in the sweepstakes case was not on the March 6 Supreme Court docket. We think it may be on the April 16 docket. Haven't seen it yet, but I'll let you know as soon as I hear something. So it's still pending, basically.
So depending on how that rolls, it may just do away with the sweepstakes.
That's correct.
But that answer your question, I hope. Thank you, Ms. Robuck, thank you for being here tonight.
I need to say something to Ms. Robuck, I'm glad you brought that up. Ms. Irving has been in communication. But also, North Side Shopping Center, you have really, some of the people have been out there a long time, keeling and swinging, and they have been working and saying they need to have some of the things that we're giving others. They've been strong folks, they have maintained their businesses, and we're gonna be meeting with them to try to see what they want again. They've already told us, but we want to put it on record again, and thank you for bringing that to the attention.
Well, we appreciate that and would love to be invited to the meeting.
You will.
We visited all the stores there to let them know who we are and that we're in the neighborhood. And we actually went in the sweepstake location and hung signs up about our services. We certainly hope that their patrons might consider coming over for budgeting counseling and other services that could be rendered.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Robuck. All right, is there anyone else who wants to be heard on this before I close? All right, seeing no one, I'll now declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of the North Central Winston-Salem Area Plan.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion, Councilmember Montgomery?
Two, two things. One, it's a question and, well, comment and question in the same sense. As Mr. Norby stated, the area plans are much more in terms of that envisioning plan of how development should happen in the process, and helping community understand that it's not necessarily what the city's going to do out of the city's pockets and coffers to actually do development. One thing that I'm very interested in, in terms of when we do the plans, I know we reference these plans consistently when we have rezonies and we have, and when we look at development. But in terms of being able to take a more proactive way of engaging the private sector in terms of these plans, Ms. City Manager, I'd be very interested to see how we can be more engaging with the private sector in terms of helping them to understand what these plans entail and how that investment can be paired to see exactly what we want to see happening in some of these neighborhoods. Because I think when you look at, and I hear it, as we're going through some updates in other parts of the community, the sense of the fact that we continue to see these same plans going over and over again, and not very much takes place, and I think it's two pieces there. One, the fallacy that is the belief that the city's the one that's gonna do all the work. But then on the other side, making sure that we do have some driving forces and some pieces behind, actually reaching out to the private sector to say this is what we have going on. And I know all of us on council attempt to do that in our own ways, to have that, those conversations within community, but I think there's some more things we can do to push these plans. And the second piece was something that was stated in reference to one of the items there in North Point Shopping Center, that I think is very important, and as we look at these plans and looking at areas, one thing that's very important as we look at what happens around areas that have higher levels in concentration of poverty. One particular thing that we see there that was mentioned in reference to the Plasma Center that's located there, I don't know what we have and what opportunities we have as a community, but those type of centers which are specifically targeted and located in low-income poverty, in low-income communities particularly, are, in my opinion, much like some of the sweepstake places, that individuals use those facilities as more of an income stream and use those because there's a dollar amount you get for your first go-in, then there's a higher dollar amount you get after you consistently go back, and you can go back over a certain period of time. And to me, it's gonna be very interesting, I don't know how those are regulated, how those work, and I'd like the staff to at least bring some information back, just on how those are zoned, how they're regulated in that process. That's some information that I would really like to see, because there's a trend of those being located as well in impoverished communities.
Thank you. Councilmember Bessie and Councilmember Light.
Just to note, Councilmember Burke is right, we need to support our businesses in the area, and I just wanted to let you know that I bought my current business suit at North Side Center, and this time.
Very good. Councilmember Light?
Thank you. Just to add to Councilmember Montgomery's comments, it's not just in poverty areas that the Plasma Centers are located. There's one in Washington Park that causes all sorts of problems for the Y and other others that is surrounding that area. But yes, I second the idea of seeing what could be done.
Okay, Councilmember Burke.
Yes, I was in the store, and it was at North Side Shopping Center. And the lady who manages the works in that area, a person made the statement, "We really don't want you," and it became like an argument. And I thought when things cool off, I wasn't going into the place since she was angry, I think when it cools off, I'm gonna send, I'm gonna ask Mr. Mack to go in to develop a conversation so we know that businesses are important, and we know people need blood. But the concern was being afraid of the blood, and I think we need to be careful how we approach. So we will be following up with the folks out there with the meeting, because when we have our meeting, we would like for them to be a part of that meeting also. And Mr. Bessie, you look very nice.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you. Item 10.
Item 10, continuation of consideration of ordinances approving requests for certificates of public convenience and necessity for two taxicab companies in the city of Winston-Salem. This item was continued from the February 2 and March 2 City Council meeting. A, public hearing on ordinance approving requests for certificates of public convenience and necessity of city cab for the operation of 14 taxicabs in the city of Winston-Salem.
Councilmembers, I understand from staff that we would be wise to continue this item to the May 4 meeting, so with the concurrence of our Public Safety Chair or the entertainer motion in that regard.
Motion to continue.
Second.
Motion to continue this item to the May 4 meeting. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you. B.
Item B, public hearing on ordinance approving requests for certificates of public convenience and necessity of Bluebird Taxi for the operation of five taxicabs in the city of Winston-Salem.
Public Safety Chairman Taylor.
Motion to continue with comments.
Well, actually, that one, I think we can go forward with item B. I believe that is ready to vote on if you're comfortable with it.
Okay, if the council is okay with moving forward, I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, good, thank you.
Wait, did we close the public hearing the last time, or did we leave it open?
We left it open.
Okay.
So we do need to close the public hearing on both A and B, and I'll do that here.
And you want to see if anybody is available to speak?
Yes, anybody want to speak on item B, which is the Bluebird Taxi? All right, I'll close the public hearing, thank you, city attorney. Now we have a motion from Public Safety Chairman Taylor to approve item B. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to have some comments.
Yes, I'm sorry, please, go ahead.
It doesn't affect the vote, but I do just want to say for all those who are interested, we're doing, and the staff and the council are doing what we can to present a balanced approach to doing business when it comes to vehicles for hire. I wanted to state that in Public Safety Committee, we talked a little bit about streamlining the informational process so that all citizens know what's going on at all times when it comes to vehicles for hire. So with the help of the Department of Transportation, we're putting together a booklet that outlines the ordinance. We restrict the ordinance, talk about everything we need there, and also we'll talk a little bit about information on the process for applying for vehicles for hire and for operating a vehicle for hire business. a vehicle for hire business. So I just want to thank the manager, Mr. Turner, and Ms. McCullough for helping to pull all of that together. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Item 11?
Item 11, resolution adopting the proposed city-county public art plan recommended by Community Development Housing General Government Committee.
Ms. Norby?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. As council knows, this, the idea for having a public art master plan was first brought up in legacy, and so when you adopted that, that was one of the action items is to pursue looking at that. And Kelly Bennett has been working on that with Evan Raleigh, the city manager's staff there, and they've been working with a broad array of citizens who are interested in public art. And through that collaborative process, they have put together this proposed plan that's coming to you, and in the next cycle, it'll also be considered by the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. And I'll turn it over to Kelly to go through the highlights of the plan.
Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As Paul said, this grew out of the legacy 2030 input and recently got the city-county planning board endorsement. So why public art? There are many reasons, and the biggest one might be Winston-Salem's identity as the City of Arts and Innovation. Public art, what we're talking about here is art in the public realm, visible from public space, can be publicly or privately owned, any medium. And this plan grew out of our public art planning committee. This was a group of nine individuals from different arts organizations around Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. And the committee's vision for the plan is many types of projects, from sculptures to murals to functional and interactive pieces like bus stops and bike racks. And locations would be equitably distributed around the city and county, parks, neighborhoods, schools, libraries, and of course downtown. Winston-Salem and Forsyth County's current approach to public art has been mostly passive, leaving most projects to outside organizations, often creating problems, especially in the use of public space. Several other cities have public art plans and fund public art through a variety of different mechanisms. And what all of these places have in common is a public art commission to oversee this Winston-Salem has a number of obstacles to creating public art, including this need for capacity to organize projects. We don't have a point person in the city when an outside organization wants to create public art or when the city itself wants to create public art. It's kind of reinventing the wheel all the time. So this plan's central recommendation is the creation of a public art commission that would be that nexus of these four pieces of any public art project, which are ideas, artists, public space, and funding. Key responsibilities of the public art commission would be to commission works of public art, designate sites for public art, serve as the artist selection panel, among other responsibilities. Staff responsibilities, this would be city-county planning and the city manager's office and county manager's office would be support to the commission and also coordinating with appropriate city and county departments for maintenance, repair, community outreach, permits, and other requirements of public artwork. And this would be a working commission of nine members. The committee felt strongly that not all members be professional artists, so there are four slots for at-large community members, people that are interested and have a passion for public art, and two civic and business leaders. Part of the city and county investment here would be in public space. The commission would also attempt to raise funds, possibly through crowdfunding, donations. And in the past, the city has used the occupancy tax to pay for public art, and there is $100,000 remaining in the public art fund, and this plan recommends returning to this funding mechanism and also investigating percent for art, which a lot of municipalities use for capital projects. And another responsibility of the commission would be community engagement, which would include marketing, advocacy, and education as the program moved forward. Next steps be to consider whether to adopt a public art plan, take the plan to the county commissioners, and if both the city and county adopt the plan, develop an interlocal agreement, determine a budget, and then appoint a public art commission. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Bennett?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Burke?
I have been one of the strong supporters for public art. In fact, I've visited the city, looked at it, and with us being a city with art, if Mr. Milton Rose were sitting here, he would say that is something that we truly need. And I think in order to get it like it ought to be, it has to be someone moving for it, like a commission. So I'm for that 100%.
Good. Councilmember Taylor?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I think public art is very important to the process, so I definitely think we need to have this commission. I'll just offer my comments. I do believe that, to the mayor and members of the council, that four years may be a bit too long when it comes to duration. I think I would suggest maybe two- to three-year increments. I would also ask a question. Now, most of our commissions and boards, with the exception of a couple, they report to the city council, and the city council makes the recommendation. And from what I've seen here, that is, that may not be the process. So could you just add a little bit more clarity for that, please?
Some of the commissions, like the HRC handle aspects, the Historic Resource Commission, I should say, handle aspects in their specialty area, like historic resources, and they do have that power to make those decisions. And I suppose some of these responsibilities could, you know, be shared with the city council, perhaps when the city council is appointing the budget, would be a way to oversee this body.
Yeah. Councilmember Taylor, I'll just add in too that basically this is just the overall plan here. The details that lay out what are the powers and duties of the public art commission would be detailed in that interlocal agreement. If the county adopts it, we will hammer out those details, and then that interlocal agreement would be brought to both the council and the county commissioners. That would spell out what they could and couldn't do, what they need to come to the elected bodies for. I think in general, though, if you want public art to be active and expedited and all that, it's good to have a working commission that is actually, can help make things happen. So you'll want to kind of look at that as you see the interlocal agreement and see if that achieves the right balance of duties between the commission and what the council and the commissioners decide on.
So in all, Madam Attorney?
If I may, I would like to add on page 229. I think this gets to your point in terms of the actual appointment of the members of the commission. It calls for, and this is just a guideline, of course, it would have to be approved by both the city council and county board of commissioners, but it looks like the proposal is for the city council to appoint some members and the county commissioners to appoint others as well. Just sort of like the city-county utility commission, some members appointed by the city council, some members appointed by the county commissioners. I think that's what you were getting at.
It is. So I guess in all brevity, I support, and I'm going to digress, and I'm just looking forward to the process.
Thank you. Councilmember Montgomery, then Councilwoman Lyatt, then Councilmember Adams.
Again, I think public art is something that, as a community, we support very strongly. Some of my questions align to some in which Councilmember Taylor asks, but more specifically, as we get to the point that's going to be coming up as we lay out this plan and in those conversations, it'd be important as we look at the funding pieces that we, how we allocate as a city, dollars, that it's very specific that any city dollars go towards projects specifically done in the city. And likewise, in terms of how we share in cost of the commission and any additional cost that comes along with that in terms of how it will actually operate. Those are some specific things that I think we need to make sure as that's laid out, that is very clear on how our investments use within the confines of the City of Winston-Salem.
Good point. Councilwoman Lyatt?
I just want to make the comment that I'm not an artist or an expert on art, and I don't think most of the council members would claim to be. So I would say, yes, we would make decisions about funding and whatever, but it's best to leave the decisions about art not in the city council's hands. So I would definitely approve this. I've been very excited about this all along.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. We're growing, and we're doing a lot of new development and enhanced development to older structures and historic parts of our community. We need art as like an accessory to what we're trying to do. It's good that we got all of the nice buildings and they look great and the street skates and things, but if you don't have that accessory of art in that space that gives it depth and gives it meaning and makes it that people want to come there, then we're just creating, we're creating our idea, but we still need to have something that draws people into the City of Winston-Salem and not just our citizens, but tourism. This past Friday, I attended the dedication, I guess, of the Sixth Street archway to the Arts District, right there at the corner of Sixth and Cherry Street. There were a lot of people there. It was amazing, the dedication itself, and you could feel the energy and the passion of the people, and you could see when the people were riding down Cherry, they were all, I hope no one has a wreck looking at this thing, but they were slowing down to look at it, and even at night when the lights are on it from the street lamps. It is amazing, and it's just a small piece of the potential of what we could do in Winston-Salem. I too hope that we will follow suit. I don't like us to follow anybody, but I think we need to be proactive in trying to figure out where we fit in with the budgeting part of this on the financial side, that we too may want to look at how Raleigh and the others have line items specific this type of initiative. Because if we're going to do this, we need to do it, and we need to do it right. I am concerned, though, on the time factor, Kelly and Mr. Norby. What happens if the county doesn't vote and support it? Do we still, we just, we go with this? No, right?
Right. If the county declines, then it'll be a city art, public art commission.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember McIntosh and Councilmember Burke?
Councilmember Adams took several of my points, but just a couple real quick things. Besides the intrinsic benefits of having public art in your community, the arts business is a very labor-intensive business, so we create lots of jobs, I think, on average more than a lot of other industries do. There's an opportunity to have it be a very equalizing program. Art can be, public art can be put in any ward, in anybody, in any neighborhood, and I think it's important to remember that the entire city will be paying for it, so the entire city needs to enjoy the benefits of it. We already have a very strong infrastructure for the arts community here. That's something that we need to leverage, and it's something that I think we have a first mover, or not first mover, but we have an advantage that other communities don't. And I know Raleigh's trying to steal our thunder by being, being an arts community. I think we're significantly ahead of them, and I think we need to stay significantly ahead of them, and I think we need to put money in it, and I think we need to ask the community to step up and dig deep, and let's go big on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke.
I was going to say with us being the city with all the arts, we should have it even if the county does not agree to have it. And I was also interested in Mr. McIntosh when he talked about it, let it be throughout the city, not just in one area. Sometimes we're just downtown, but we have other areas.
And picking up on Councilmember Adams' comment about the arts there, also on May 9, the Art Park is actually going to be dedicated there, and there's a great example of the private sector stepping forward. City cooperated a little bit, but it's basically funded out of the private sector, so we're looking forward to that as well. All right, any other questions? Councilwoman Lyatt, it came through your committee, or would you be ready to make a motion?
I very, very gladly move a pro. Second.
Motion second. Discussion? On further motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? That's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Bennett.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, we have a need for a closed session, and before we go into that, I recognize Councilmember Burke.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, we have people working with this city and doing so many things. I just wanted to share, and some of you may already know it, the economic impact that our universities and colleges are making. When I was in trustee board meeting at Winston-Salem State, and they shared that Winston-Salem State makes it possible, $264.1 million that helps us. If visitors come in and we talk about the triad area and how people in this region. Salem College, $59.4 million, and Wake Forest, $3.3 billion. So I think at times when we have universities doing what they're doing, they're creating a whole lot for this city. And I think, Mayor, members of the council, that our city manager could, at some times, sent a letter in writing to let them know because they are putting bucks back into our community. And when you talk about visitors come in, they're spending, and I want the universities to know how much we appreciate and respect them for what they give to this community.
Thank you. Great point. Councilmember Montgomery and Councilmember Tyler?
It wasn't, my comments were separate from that, but I'd just say ditto to what Councilmember Burke said, as well as when we think about having state-supported institutions here in our community, it's important to look at that financial impact, and when there's threats towards that, that has an impact on our local economy, and I think we have to support that fact. But what I wanted to bring up in common is to acknowledge the fact that we did have one of our councilmembers celebrated a birthday over the weekend, and so just want to say happy birthday to Councilmember Adams.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Montgomery. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. My comments were in line with Councilmember Burke's comments, and I just wanted to make an announcement. The City of Winston-Salem is partnering with the college advisory board, with the local colleges and universities here in the city. It'll be some students from Wake Forest, Winston-Salem State University, Salem College, Forsyth Tech, and I believe that I got them all, the Winston-Salem School of the Arts. This coming Saturday, April the 11th, at Wake Forest Innovation Quarter, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., there are students from all the universities coming together to discuss hot-button topics and issues and how we can attract and retain our young professionals, which is also important to the livelihood of a city. So any businesses or anyone who wants to come out and support that effort, again, that's this Saturday, April the 11th, from 9:00 to 3:00 at Wake Forest Innovation Quarter, please come out and support our businesses, our city, and our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Recognize Councilman McIntosh for motion.
I move that the city council go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A4 to discuss the location or expansion of an industry and/or business within the city.
Second.
Motion second. On further motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? That's unanimous. Brief for closed session. Brief for closed session.[508.72]
Yeah.
Is there a motion to end the closed session?
So moved to end the closed session.
Second.
Councilmember Tyler moves to end the closed session, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. I'm favoring the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Councilwoman Montgomery, seconded by Councilmember McIntosh. I'm favoring the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, we're adjourned.